Councilwoman Casarelli?
Here.
DePena?
Here.
Graziano?
Here.
Notary?
Here.
Lovell?
Here.
Councilwoman Stromile Burke is absent, and Mayor Mallahan?
Here. Pledge of lea- Sunshine?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Code 1975, known as Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 21st, 2022 editions of the Belleville Times and Starlight. This sunshine was complied with by a document informed to the press, posted in file with the municipal clerk, the annual resolution, showing the date and time and place of each regular meeting. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the township website and also on the bulletin board.
Thank you, sir. Before we go on with the rest of the meeting, I just want to announce that, as you see, Councilwoman Burke is not present today. She's a little under the weather, and I just want to let her know if she's watching us that she's certainly in our thoughts and prayers for speedy recovery. Mr. Casarelli?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have the honor of presenting some proclamations tonight to the honorees of the 2024 St. Patrick's Day Parade, which is in Nutley and ran by the Nutley Irish American Association. However, they are always so grateful to include some Belleville honorees into their program every year, so we're very thankful for that. So I am going to start off with presenting, if she could come up, Barbara O'Halloran to come up. Barbara is the 2024 Member of the Year for the Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade. Barbara, wait, no, don't say that way on. I'm gonna leave that. Wait, wait, wait. Yeah. So whereas Barbara O'Halloran was born and raised in Belleville, so yeah, they do honor some Belleville people. She's lived in Nutley for over 32 years with her daughter Samantha, Kelly, and mother-in-law Vicki. Barbara was a Nutley crossing guard for seven years, become an employee of Essex County for 16 years, working in the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits for the past 13 years. She has been a 10-year member of the Nutley Irish Relay for Life team and led the team to raise over $11,000 for the American Cancer Society. She's currently working with first responders in Nutley to supply backpacks filled with items for children for emergency use. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belleville hereby recognize Barbara O'Halloran as the 2024 Member of the Year of the Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade and wish her much success now and in the future. Councilman Lovell now has the Firefighter of the Year. And this is for Gabriel Miller. Gabriel, you out there? Come on in. Whereas the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belleville wish to recognize Gabriel Miller as the 2024 Firefighter of the Year of the Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade, and whereas Gabriel was born and raised in Nutley with his two siblings Nick and Vincent, a graduate of Nutley High School, Reckers University, cum laude, that's very good, by the way, with a decree in political science, I'm an engineer from Reckers. Whereas Gabriel, a third-generation, God bless you, firefighter, he was hired by the Nutley Fire Department in 2016, whereas Gabriel served as a state delegate and is currently completing postgraduate work at the Naval Postgraduate School, Center for Defense and Security, and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belleville hereby recognize Gabriel Miller as the 2024 Firefighter of the Year of Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade and wish him much success. Thank you for your service. Now Councilman Notary has the Deputy Grand Marshal.
Maureen Callahan. Maureen, are you here?
Hey.
Whereas the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belleville wish to recognize Maureen Callahan as the 2024 Deputy Grand Marshal of the Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade, and whereas Maureen, born in York and raised in Carney, Maureen and her husband Jim have been married for 43 years, parents of Megan and Bridgette, and grandparents of Elkie and Clarence, and whereas Maureen retired after a 30-year career as a special education paraprofessional, spending most of those years at Lincoln School in Nutley. She's currently a dedicated and active volunteer in their PTO and other organizations, and whereas Maureen is currently working with first responders in Nutley to supply backpacks filled with items for children for emergency use, and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belleville hereby recognize Maureen Callahan as the 2024 Deputy Grand Marshal of the 2024 Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade and wish her much success now and in the future.
One more?
Behind you.
This way. Right here. I was mindful.
Snuck up behind you.
And now the mayor has the honor of introducing the Grand Marshal, who is also a Belleville guy.
Robert.
Belleville guy.
I'm going to mention during my mayor's report, it was an honor to welcome you all Saturday evening into Belleville, something that's been tradition since I've been mayor. I greet the caravan. The one week before, there's a pub crawl that happens before the parade, which will be this coming Saturday, and it's always been tradition that I meet the bus as it enters Belleville, and special thanks to our chief and our police department for the escort from point A to point B. I know it was very well received, and it's always our pleasure to do that, so thank you. Okay. Whereas the mayor municipal council of the township of Belleville hereby wish to recognize Robert Irwin as the 2024 Grand Marshal of the Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade, and whereas Robert, born in Belleville, attended Bergen County Votech, studied aviation at the Teterboro School of Aeronautics, and whereas in 1998, Robert went on to a career of law enforcement with the Nutley Police Department, serving many functions in the patrol and detective bureau, he was very instrumental in starting the Nutley PD Emergency Services Unit, and whereas Robert is a firearms and police academy instructor with responsibilities in internal affairs, IT, and investigative bureau, among many other duties. Robert is also a current member of the Nutley Elks. Whereas Robert and his wife Cheryl are the proud owners of Sign Explosion in Nutley, proud father of Danielle, Andrew and Alexander, and daughter of Madison, his little angel in heaven, and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor municipal council of the township of Belleville do hereby recognize Robert Irwin as the 2024 Grand Marshal of the Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade and wish him much success now and in the future.
We also have the president of the Nutley Irish American Association here, Ms. Deirdre Hollywood. I'm going to call her up and see maybe she can say a few words about the upcoming parade.
I just want to thank you, Councilman Casarelli, and the entire board for honoring us every year for our parade. It's really, you don't have to do it, and you still do it, and it just shows your sense of community, not just in Belleville but the surrounding towns as well. We invite you all, I hope you are all going to attend the parade and march with us. It starts at 1:00. We ask you to be there at noon on Harrison Avenue for lineup, and then we're going to march down Franklin Avenue with the review stand in front of John Walker Middle School. So we look forward to seeing everyone Saturday.
Thank you. Just going to give it a few seconds for our honored guest to exit. You sure you don't want to stay for the meeting? Okay, we're going to move on with our agenda. The next item on our agenda is the report of the manager, Mr. Manager.
Good evening. Just wanted to also let the council know that Mr. Martino is on his way in, just running a little late. Mayor, council, exciting news. We had a pre-constructions meeting for the Plant Home Park project, and this Thursday we are mobilizing. Again, weather has been relatively mild. We've been lucky. Obviously, we're entering into March, which is always a good sign because even if it snows in March, it's usually gone relatively quick. So we hope that this project, which includes an all-inclusive playground, additional pickleball courts, another dog run or dog park, half-court basketball, this should be completed by the beginning of the summer, so we'll have an entire summer. So that's pretty exciting news. We constantly get updates on our new gas pump, gas ring system. We're being told that probably this time next month we'll be up and running, so we did get some confirmation on that, and Bobby's been working on that. Mayor, we have a tentative date for spring shred-a-day, which is April 13th. We'll firm that date up with the company and then we'll get it and post it, but the paper shred-a-day has always been a big turnout for our residents. It's over, we hold it at the senior center on Saturday, and we're shooting for April 13th. We're just waiting to get confirmation back from the shred-a-company. And I believe that's the brief report I have, certainly available for questions.
Questions of the manager by the council. Moving along. Next item on the agenda is the report of the manager. Going to go through some upcoming events. First, this coming Saturday. Report of the mayor. All right. Always on your mind. Report of the mayor, upcoming events. This coming Saturday is our rabies vaccination. It's our first one of the year. Usually we do two a year. That's usually the very popular one. It's going to be on Saturday, March 2nd, this coming Saturday, at the fire headquarters on Franklin Avenue. Information is on our township website. Also this coming Saturday, as you heard, is the Nutley Irish Day Parade. So we are St. Patrick's Day Parade, so we are going to gather at 12:00, and we are going to step off at 1:00. Looking forward to see everybody, it's supposed to be 55 degrees on Saturday. Good signs. Monday, March 4th, in the children's room of the library, they are doing... Anybody know what's going on there? Read Across America, Dr. Seuss. Yes. I don't know why you got cut off on me. They are doing Dr. Seuss Read Across America on Monday, March 4th, at the library. On March 8th, the council has been invited, it's a Friday, to the Quick Check Grand Opening. It's a Friday afternoon at 2:00, March 8th. Also, the police department on March 21st is doing Cannoli's with the cops. That's going to be hosted at Rinaldi's. Union Avenue. There'll be extra parking across the street at school number three. Looking forward to that. Past events. Two weeks ago, we raised the Ming Dynasty flag here at Town Hall. It's a very interesting flag. It first flew in Belleville in 1871. We fly that flag every year right around this time to celebrate Chinese New Year. Speaking of Chinese New Year, we did launch Chinese New Year on February 10th. It is the Year of the Dragon. We did a live stream from the mayor's office with fireworks. Anybody see that? Yes? Two people saw it. We also, last Friday, we did the Dominican flag raising here at Town Hall. It was done last Friday. We had a great event at the library this past Thursday. It was Black History Month. My dear friend, former summonment Jamal Holly, had come in to speak for an after-hours lecture at the library, very well received, and the police department, speaking of well-received, a self-defense class went very well, so some great pictures, chief, thank you for that. News. I did put up a story, a post on my social media about a week ago, which we called dis- disembowing. Well, we wanted to make sure that you knew that something that happened in Belleville was fake news. This is the word I'm thinking of. Somebody else? Disembowing. Now, disembowing news, so if you saw some video that was circulating around social media, I always say get your sources, get your information, news directly from the sources, not social media. There was video of people walking around town. There was all kinds of rumors circulating about the origins of these people and why they were here and how they came about to be walking around Belleville and why the police department was there. Soon as I saw it, I knew it was an orderly progression, and it was a prayer walk by St. Peter's Church that was escorted by the Belleville Police Department, but the rumors circulating on social media were wildfire. I mean, people long way far away from Belleville were reaching out saying, "I heard this story. What is it all about?" So I was glad to be able to get to the source of that. I spoke directly to our chief, I spoke directly to Father Ivan, and we think we clarified that. The DPW, I don't see Bobby here tonight, but the DPW was recently acknowledged by Congressman Mikey Sherrill. I want to thank her office for that acknowledgement. Speaking of acknowledgement, our cheerleaders won first place in a tournament this weekend, and also this weekend, I think, or just a couple days ago, our wrestling team did a great job in representing the township. I saw that also on social media. Two Saturdays ago, we gave out candy to our great seniors at the Tuesday Club. I want to thank and acknowledge Ms. George Beach from Number Eight School for the Chinese lanterns that now decorate Town Hall and the mayor's office. Spring 2024 Recreation Program Registration is now live, and last but not least, as I mentioned last week, the police department has begun enhanced parking and traffic enforcement, so just be careful, do not call me if and when you do get a parking ticket. Other than that, I'm good. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. None as reported. Next item on the agenda is communications.
The Belleville Tri-City Italian-American Club is requesting the use of the senior center on April 13, 2024, to hold an indoor flea market from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Mayor Michael Manna has received a letter of appreciation from the Tabithan Community, and Brian Banda has resigned from the rent loving board effective February 21st, 2024.
Okay, next item on our agenda is ordinances. We have ordinance 45-23, ordinance for possible adoption, and ordinance by the mayor and the council of the township of Belleville, County of Essex, New Jersey, adopting the amended Roche Diagnostics redevelopment plan concerning the property located at 11 Franklin Avenue, block 2301, blocks 1.01, 1.02, 1.03, 1.04, and 1.05, formerly Lot 1. Need a motion to introduce? So move.
Second.
We have a motion made and second introduced. Clerk, call the law.
Councilwoman Casarelli?
Motion for open for public hearing.
Bobby.
It's a motion open for public.
Open for public hearing.
I apologize.
Yeah, I'll make a motion open for public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Came just in time. Good that you were here.
Councilwoman Casarelli?
I'm used to the old way. We used to do the introductions. But it's been some time that we switched that. We need a motion to open for public commenting. Yeah, we got it.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Lovell?
Yes.
Mayor Mallahan?
Yes. We are now over public commenting on this ordinance, and this ordinance only. If you have a comment on this ordinance, this ordinance only, please come forward. Once I call upon you, Mr. Frank Tantoni, stick your name and address for the record.
Vincent Frank Tantoni, 129 Mount Prospect. On this ordinance, I'm glad you posted on the board out there so we could read it. The problem is, we can't learn anything by reading it. It's all vagary and some of the things where dates and other things are just blank lines, not filled in. So we know nothing about it, so what is this all about?
Do we want to go to Dean? Let's go to Dean.
Let's go to Dean.
Dean, you might be using your...
Come up here.
Here, take the chair.
You know what? You can stand right there, Steve, and just use your mind on the end there.
Come here, Dean. Okay.
Thank you very much. So, good evening. My name is Dean Donatelli. I am the Special Redevelopment Counsel for the township. I just wanted to start out, there was a correspondence late that I asked Mr. Cabrera to add to the agenda, and I'm going to recap kind of the procedural point where we are this ordinance and redevelopment plan. Sir Frank Tantoni, this is going to address your question specifically at the outset. I'm going to kind of explain where we are as generally as you asked. So this redevelopment plan was introduced by council in December. It was referred to the planning board, and heard by the planning board in its consistency review on February 8th, 2024. The planning board communicated back to, and that was a consistency review with the planning board's review of the redevelopment plan. The planning board communicated back to the council by way of a correspondence received today, which I asked Mr. Cabrera to add to the agenda, and I can summarize for you what it says. It concludes, the planning board concluded that the redevelopment plan is consistent with the town's master plan and the town's reexamination report. They did ask, the board did ask that the council consider affordable housing for the senior units, which I'll explain in more detail, as part of the redevelopment plan, as well as metered or pay parking in some of the interior roads. At the planning board, the points were raised. On the affordable housing piece, I kind of was there to kind of work the board through the process. On the affordable housing piece, it's a world in and of itself, which I communicated to the planning board. We have the 2025 fourth round coming up, so the town has signed a settlement agreement, which is in effect with Fairshire Housing. So my response to the planning board on that recommendation was that it's probably better to deal with a comprehensive affordable housing plan in 2025 when the fourth round comes around. On the meter parking, the owner, property owner and kind of proponent of the redevelopment plan really pushed back hard on that because the concept is, and I'll explain it, is kind of a destination retail mixed-use redevelopment there. Without any particular details, the plan really lays out the parameters, and the owner was concerned about it affecting negatively the parking, on-street parking, retail in particular, and then the whole destination concept of this location. When I say this location, I think everyone knows, the council knows, that this is the former Roche Diagnostics campus, currently is developed with a self-storage facility, the Wawa convenience store with fuel sales, and the Starbucks. So this plan sets the zoning basically for the remaining parcels, which will be used conceptually for a three-phase overall long-term redevelopment, which includes in the first phase, a mixed-use location, mixed-use meaning residential over retail with a boulevard or promenade used to support the retail and an amphitheater for the public. Also as part of Phase 1, there's some surface parking, which will support those uses. Phase 2 is where the surface parking is located. There would be commercially used, no residential in Phase 2. The redevelopment team kind of pushed hard on wanting to see a mixed-use kind of community, urban, urban community kind of site there, so that will be part of Phase 2, which again would be kind of across the promenade from residential. And Phase 3 is the remaining corner lot next to Wawa, and the remainder of the Starbucks lot would be Phase 3, and that would be, again, commercial. And so that's really what the redevelopment plan you're considering for adoption states, and I think it's probably easier for me to describe it to you rather than read a 50-page document. But if I could just finish one item, like one final point, when it comes to this board's consideration of adoption of the redevelopment plan by ordinance, which is fair consideration, if you're going to accept the recommendation of the planning board, that could be done by a simple majority of the members in attendance. If you're not, if you're going to proceed without making those recommendations, I kind of summarized my views on those things, and as I did with the planning board, then you would need four votes of the council in order to proceed without those recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I should, before we open up, I'm sorry, Mr. Frank Tantoni, I understand, before we opened up public commenting, I should have had Dean up here to give that explanation.
I know there was two questions. The COA one, I kind of, I understand right now. We had originally met our COA, we set up an account to deal with any future contributions from the developers to do that. The second was that, I think, the parking. I mean, this is private property, so we can't put a public lot on private property.
It gets complicated, and there's risks. I know Mr. Martino agrees, there's liability questions. I think the town is trying to, as you know, the town's trying to resolve some of the parking issues in certain locations, but to your point, Councilwoman Lovell, yes, it raises liability concerns.
So do we need to amend the ordinance with that?
Yeah, we had a, myself, Councilman Casarelli, and Councilman Graziano were in a redevelopment meeting yesterday, where Dean basically gave us the same update, and I know I wasn't at that Plano meeting, you were. I think we all left that meeting yesterday knowing that we were okay with the recommendation.
No, you're right, Mayor, and the concerns that came about, Dean explained it to us, and we can handle that space for that period of time in a different way.
Yeah. Your concerns at the Plano meeting are now, will be noted in the redevelopment plan for
So basically, what we'll...
I want to make sure we address.
Yeah, understood. You will be adopting the redevelopment plan as it was introduced without the, without accepting the recommendations of the planning board.
But how are we going to address parking?
So we can, so that's the redevelopment plan. There's also, and when a redeveloper is firmed up, typically it's the owner, we will incorporate issues that were raised, not really planning issues, but more property management issues, overnight parking and things, not so much the meter. Parking, exactly.
And we currently have about $3 million in our COA fund, right? Dean Franks?
Yes.
Yes, we currently have about $3 million in our 40.
Yeah, and that's another point, Mayor, that the settlement agreement with Fairshire Housing, as I know the council knows, Belleville is a urban aid municipality, does not have an onsite requirement for... It does not have an onsite requirement for affordable housing. So, the mechanism through that settlement agreement is to, for every residential project, it's a 1.5% of the cost of the construction, including the land. That goes into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which I know the council is working on getting that deployed to the residents of Belleville.
Good. Thank you, Dean, for that. Very good explanation. Again, I should have done that before we opened up public commenting. We are now open for public commenting. We have Mr. Frantantoni here.
Unfortunately, that's what I was afraid of. Now, when this Roche property became available eight, 10 years ago, the public outcry, public hearings were held, you know, and they, you were on the board, you were on the board, you were on the board.
I've been on 20 years.
We were promised no housing. There wasn't going to be no housing. There was a big outcry. This room was packed. There wasn't going to be no housing. But now, I'm getting a little bird from out of town that calls me and tells me about this. About a year and a half ago, I called Mr. Iacoma because the afternoon of the town meeting, I got a developer who does work in town call me up, and he says, you go to meetings, you've got that crazy board, you've got to address them. They're going to build, a developer wants 550 units on the Claret, on the Roche property. He says, they're overbuilding in this town. I'm not going to work in that town anymore. Mr. Iacoma, recall, I called him. And strangely, that night, it was effective, that call I got, you guys took it off the agenda. We don't need more housing. As Mr. Donatello says, we don't have a co-op obligation and all that. That site, leave it, retail, commercial, fine. I have no problem with that. In fact, I welcome it. I think most of you don't. We don't need more housing. We are ready. Our density is more than the country of India. We only have the three square miles. We only have two empty. Take the golf courts and the park out, and we've got 38,000. 19,000. Yesterday's paper, we're the highest density state in the nation. We're the highest tax in the nation. Just yesterday's paper. The record. And the more residential, it's the worse time of rate of all. We welcome commercial, we welcome retail, we welcome industrial. Residential is the worst because of all the services that demands. So, please, you're going to vote on this, and that's why I was waiting, put that up for us to read, and it's. Mr. Donatello explained it probably, which was I was to scare them. And I was called yesterday advised of it. So, please, if you guys care about Belleville, and I doubt it to do because the, we haven't even read it. One of these monsters, you're building the human cages on Washington Avenue yet. Already, it's traffic. You can't move on Belleville Avenue. It's now, I was coming to this meeting, it's telling between 7:00 and 9:00, and 4:00 and 7:00 at night. It's all day long now. It's all day long. My 20-minute ride to visit my daughter in Roseville has now turned into 50 minutes to an hour. Most of it's getting out of here. So, please, this ordinance, any of you got a conscience, any of you care for Belleville? Mr. Ravel, and your family's been here a long time, you love this town. Mr. Notary, you guys have been sitting there 20 years.
Please just address the chair.
Well, yeah, we're addressing the council.
No, he's the chair.
So, please, this plan, no housing.
Thank you.
You've got retail, you've got commercial on there. We'll welcome it. No more housing. We're overdeveloped. And I didn't bring the articles. I've been coming out the last three months, Teaneck, all these towns in North Jersey. The council people at meetings are yelling, overdevelopment is killing their towns. And you're doing it here in Belleville. Please, no housing on this plan.
Thank you. Mr. Donatelli, how many units is proposed?
A maximum of 175 units.
Not 500 change?
No.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just to clarify here too. We're talking about some 55 and older too, which basically, number one, goes towards, partially towards co-op and as well as other stuff. So, to me, I want 55 and older, so, sorry.
They can't afford what you're now. Roll up the mill street.
Mr. Frantantoni, your time is over. Thank you.
It's a grand project.
2,095, Bellstein. I can just answer one of my questions. Up to, but you don't know if it's going to be, I'm asking if it's going to be a maximum number of 175?
Maximum.
Okay. Just for clarification, because I'm just, now you mentioned the word senior before, but he's making 55 and over. So, which one is it?
There's a percentage of 55 and over.
Wait, wait, is any of, maybe, is any of that going to be senior housing, like, not age, strictly like 55 and over? I mean, just strictly senior housing?
55 and over.
No, well, I'm used to saying, you know, senior for 62 and over, but, you know, 55 and over. So, how much of that is going to be 55 and over, do you think?
So, the maximum number of units is 175. The minimum number of those units that would be 55 and over is 75.
So, you've got 75. So, you've got another 100 units that would be going.
I'll call it market rate.
On market rate. So, you answered that question. Now, that's the only housing that's going to go up on that whole parcel, those three different phases?
That's what, that's what, that's what this redevelopment plan provides for. Whether they build 100, but they cannot build more than 175.
Those are my questions.
Thank you. Anybody else to this ordinance, this ordinance only?
Did you hear everyone? Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. I'm still a little bit baffled by the numbers that are being quoted. Mr. Donatelli, you said this project would involve a maximum of 175 units, and that 75 units would be for 55 or older?
No, I think you said that's a minimum. So, in case he rents out 55. If he advertises 75 and older, and he gets 110 applicants, he can go to 110. But we forcing him to do a minimum of 75. So, it couldn't go more than that.
Any idea at this stage, the nature of the units? Are they all going to be one-bedroom? Or do you know how many? I think current zoning allows 20% of units in a complex like this to be two-bedroom.
If I could approximate, I think the plan is 75% one-bedrooms and 25% two-bedrooms. Those are maximums, maximum two-bedrooms. It's roughly in that.
Assuming that the council approves this redevelopment plan, I assume it will become a public document as of tonight. I noticed that as of today, the Oprah portal on the township website seems to be operational again. Previously, the last few weeks, which is the form. But I guess I'll be using that tonight to request a copy of this redevelopment plan. Unless you're planning, are you planning to post it on your own, or does it have to be opened? I'll. I'll.
Yeah, just open it.
All right. And the last thing I just want to mention, I checked at 5 o'clock today. This particular property, 11 Franklin Avenue, is still on the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection active contamination list. But it hasn't stopped this township, unfortunately. Belmont, the project on Belmont, the project across from the motorcycle wall, all of these properties are still on the DEP active contamination list, but we continue to build residential projects. Yes, I know they have to, there's a certain higher level of remediation that's required, but as we learned from the Belmont project, they just put a concrete cap over the contamination, which will eventually start to leach out, given enough time. But you're going, you're going to move forward again with another residential project on a known active contamination site. And I worry about the future. It may not affect any of us, but our children, grandchildren, et cetera. You're sure now are going to have to deal with the potential legal consequences of this body knowingly allowing residential projects to be constructed upon known contaminated land. Have some, have some concern about the future generations of Belleville.
Anybody else to this ordinance, this ordinance only? Do we have anybody on the phone? Anybody on the phone, on the public line? Any questions, comments about this ordinance, this ordinance only? Hearing none?
Motion closed public.
Motion to close public?
Second.
Motion made and second to close public. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Yes.
DePena, yes, thank you. Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 45-23 is adopted.
No, that was.
That was just closed, closed public. Now we'll do you that.
That was a motion to close public. Not, usually we do close and move for final adoption. We just closed. Now we're going to vote, because we have to make an amendment. Dean, do you want to tell it? Do you want to?
Yeah, I think the motion would be to adopt the.
As-is, without amendment.
Without.
Without the recommendation.
So, we need a motion.
So, it's as-is.
Just as-is, now. Okay.
As-is.
As-is.
Okay, you're good with that, Dean?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion then.
Second, yeah, second.
Motion made and second. Clerk call her off. This is for adoption.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Okay, so now ordinance 45-23 is adopted.
Hopefully, this is going to be easier. Ordinance 01-24, ordinance for possible adoption. And ordinance amending ordinance 33-23, Chapter 4, Article 23, massage therapist, massage technician, disorder of the revised ordinance of the township of Belleville with a new Chapter 4, Article 23, until massage, bodywork, and somatic therapy. Need a motion to introduce, motion to open public? Second. Motion made and second to open public. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes, we are now open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Hearing none, seeing none. Hearing none, seeing none, and any motion to close public? I'm sorry, do we have anybody on the phones? Hearing none. I'll get any motion to close, public commenting, and move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second, all in one.
You got this. I got this. Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
No.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Okay, so ordinance 01-24 is adopted.
Moving quicker. Ordinance 02-24, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for water main valve and lead service line replacement in and by the township of Belleville, the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $475,000 therefor, authorizing the issuance of $400,000 in bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the costs thereof. Need a motion to introduce. So moved. Second. Motion made and second to introduce. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
No.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 02-24 is introduced.
Ordinance 03-24, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of township-wide machinery and equipment in and by the township of Belleville, in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $500,000 therefor, and authorizing the issuance of $475,000 worth of bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the costs thereof. Need a motion to introduce. So moved. Second. Motion made and second to introduce. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli? DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 03-24 is introduced.
Ordinance 04-23, ordinance for introduction. Wait, 04-24. Ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for water main valve and lead service line replacement in and by the township of Belleville, in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $490,000 therefor, and authorizing the issuance of $420,000 worth of bonds or notes of the township of Belleville to finance part of the costs thereof. Need a motion to introduce. So moved. Second. If a motion made and second to introduce, clerk call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel? Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 04-24 is introduced.
Ordinance 05-24, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for improvements to municipal facilities in and by the township of Belleville, in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $500,000 therefor, and authorizing the issuance of $475,000 of bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the costs thereof. Need a motion to introduce. So moved. Second. Motion made and second to introduce. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 05-24 is introduced.
Ordinance 06-24, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the sanitary system in and by the township of Belleville, in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $250,000 therefor, and authorizing the issuance of $235,000 worth of bonds or notes of the township to finance cost of the, finance part of the costs thereof. Need a motion to introduce? So moved. Second. Motion made and second. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
No.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 06-24 is introduced.
Ordinance 07-24, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water utility system in and by the township of Belleville, in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $500,000 therefor, and authorizing the issuance of $500,000 worth of bonds or notes of the township to finance the costs thereof. Both need a motion to introduce? So moved. Second. Motion made and second. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli? DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 07-24 is introduced.
Ordinance 08-24, ordinance for introduction. Ordinance of the mayor and council of the township of Belleville, county of Essex, New Jersey, adopting the 272-278 Washington Avenue redevelopment plan. Need a motion to introduce? So moved. Second. Motion made and second to introduce. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Take the part.
DePena?
No.
Rosiano?
No.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 08-24 is introduced.
Ordinance 09-24, ordinance for introduction. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the township of Belleville, county of Essex, New Jersey, adopting the 202 and 215 Belleville Avenue redevelopment plan. Need a motion to introduce? So moved. Second. Motion made and second. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
No.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 09-24 is introduced.
Next, I need a motion, moving on to item number 10 on the agenda, public comments. Need a motion to introduce public commenting? Second. Motion made and second to introduce public commenting. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.[1641.82]
Notary.
Yes.
Serval.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
We are now open for public commenting, I'm gonna ask you just to please raise your hand, when I call upon you, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak on what we all hope is township-related business.
Gary Hilton, three-oh-seven Fairway Avenue, Belleville. Uh, when are we gonna start the street cleaning again?
Usually it's, uh, we don't have hard dates in our ordinances because of weather, so sometime in December, the manager-in-chief gets together to end it, and sometime in usually early March, we get together to, uh, re-start, I guess. I will say, I think today, because it was nice out, the street sweeper was out, but you will see cars parked in the way, we don't ticket them because it's suspended, but on a nice day, the manager and the DPW director get, get the street sweeper out.
The reason I'm asking is, I, I think in the past, we had a, uh, ordinance of the delivery trucks delivering flyers for the supermarkets.
Yes.
They're all over town.
I agree with you.
People don't want them, they're just leaving in the street. When the street cleaner comes, it's gonna be taking all the vapors up. So I, we appreciate it if you would go in and see if there, there was an old ordinance for it, if not, introduce a new ordinance.
You actually passed an ordinance for it.
Excuse me?
You actually passed an ordinance for it.
Yes, so, uh, we could clean up that, that mess there. Um, you had the SoHo property that they did a nice job fixing it all up, giving extra parking on the street, they gave you some of their land, so you can make parking on the street for the apartments there. The apartments are atrocious there. Uh, went on carpenter, there's garbage all over the place, so, uh, maybe you could get the board help, go up there.
No, it sounds like it's a lot of construction code, property maintenance issues, so township manager will, I'm sure, talk to that department to get on them with regard to the paper distribution and the, and the literature. You don't have to come to council meeting to complain about that stuff, you can always, uh, go upstairs, take construction code, or talk to the manager.
I went a couple times, but he was in meetings and stuff.
That's fine.
And then, uh, I already told him about the, uh, fifty Fairway Avenue, the big branches off the tree came down, and the fellow asked me to, uh, get them picked up, their branches. And then the last thing is, this, uh, SoHo prop, I mean, the, um, property that you were just discussing about the apartments, if we're housing, putting in there, are we gonna have another, uh, Steven Crane Village there, and with all these cars gonna be parked?
Not a park, I didn't talk about it. Not a SoHo, that's a, that's a Roche. Not SoHo, a Roche. Roche.
Two-hundred-and-ninety-five Bell Street, um, just a question, whoever handles the website, I've noticed that, uh, the council election is coming up on May fourteenth, I've noticed that, uh, what do you call it, there was nothing on the town website letting citizens know that there's an election coming up, that they could take petitions out. I didn't see it, I tried.
There's been two advertisements and two local newspapers.
Oh, no, I'm just saying on the town website, I didn't see it anywhere, let's put it that way, so.
You still have time, Harry, you got another two days to get it done.
Two days, then. Nah, that's for you. All right, but anyway, but just, no, I'm just curious, because I looked on the website, I said, found it kind of odd that it was not posted, if, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, you know, I just wanna let you know, during the presentation, let's, down meeting with the police department and everything, but lately, which is no fault of the police department, and obviously the cops cannot be everywhere, but, a shooting on, on Belleville Avenue, and we had the guy killed on Middle Street, Meaching Street, another kill, yeah, a bullet in the house on one-hundred block of, uh, Apple Street, before, then you had the armed robbery, I mean, the gun violence is getting out of control, I, you know, it's not, not, nobody's fault here, it's just people that just, with the guns, just can't be crazy lately, so, and, you know, every time, every time we pick up the paper now, I mean, it's bad enough in New York, that's all you read about, and I sure don't want it happening here, but, like I said, they can only do so much, and they can't be every place at one time, it's unfortunate, um. The, uh, resolution number B and C, I assume those are, um, undersized properties that were just attached to somebody's lot there, and they can't build on them or anything? B and C, resolution?
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, yeah, I figured that was because of price, you know?
Right.
But the other one that got me was the letter H and I on, uh, three terraces and seven terraces, I'm surprised it only went for seventy-seven thousand dollars, you know, I'm.
It was assessed at that number, that was the minimum bid, or was it on one bidder or the charge?
No, that's what you just answered my question, I'm, I'm really surprised that there weren't any more bids on it, because that should've went for at least a hundred thousand, up in the quarter.
It was the second time we advertised.
Oh, you did it twice, Mary. You did it twice, and nobody bid on it.
How come you didn't bid on it?
You know, like, this forty-five Charles Street was a, a forty-five by a hundred lot which is over two feet, that went for two forty an empty lot, so I'm just surprised that this didn't go for at least a hundred thousand.
That was the appraised value, it went out twice for auction.
Isn't that crazy?
Missed it. Went out twice for auction, and the first time, nobody showed up, the second time, one bidder showed up.
No, I.
They advertised.
No, but I'm just saying, I found it kind of odd, you know, with the way the development is going on, that give you a few, few bids on the property, but unfortunately.
We're slowing down development here, I'm.
What are you gonna do?
They're only also, they were.
They don't wanna develop single-family homes, only apartments, unless they're gonna buy the rest of the block up, but we'll see, you never know. Um, just the last question, on O, cannabis, would, would, after this, had, would it be rescinded, what was the location of it?
It was, uh, well, it'd be kinda, I think it was initially issued to a name, then it was initially tied to a physical location on Washington, the end of, the Nutley side of Washington Avenue.
The Nutley side of Washington Avenue?
Washington Avenue near the Nutley border.
So what did they do, they rescinded it, they're not doing it anymore?
We are, we are.
We are rescinding it, we're taking it back.
You are rescinding, okay.
Taking it back.
Because they've done that, okay, fine, that's it, thank you.
So, my, I said, B and C, that's it, but the, um, resolution O, with the cannabis one, um, we keep expanding this, but.
We just talked about it then, we're rescinding it.
Taking it away.
We're taking it away, we're rescinding it, we're not, we're not issuing it.
Thank you, so just if you didn't read about the paper, now the, uh, New Jersey Legislature, now they're thinking about allowing homegrown cannabis, and it's ironic, all these cannabis, uh, uh, distributors and businesses are up in arms, they don't want it to be grown home to hurt their business, so, maybe that's a good thing for us who are opposed to this stuff. And, uh, the other thing, I'm sure all you board members, like me and other residents, we appreciate and love and respect our police department, so, I'm asking you, I don't think any of you, if there's anybody that would threaten to shoot police officers, I don't think any of you would appoint them to any public positions, would you? Think about it before you thought under consent agenda.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Mayor, council, my name's Richard Hapward, H A P W A R D, one-thirty-five Weaver Avenue, actually, I'm from Bluefield, but what brings me here tonight, yeah, is, uh, I have a question regarding Five Franklin Avenue, the medical building, the, either it's ventilation or, uh, ventilation or heat or something, since early January, it's very loud, and when the wind is blowing in my direction, I can hear it, I can hear it through the walls of my house, um, it, it sounds mechanical, and I actually spoke to Nick DeAngelis, and to his credit, he called me back, but he instructed me that it's more of a police matter regarding noise, um, and that they should come out and, uh, noise test it, I forget the, the term, I'm a little nervous, but the, um, the, but if they're going out to measure the decibels.
The decibel levels.
Uh, yeah, the decibel levels, the, I can see the, it's up on the roof, whatever's making the noise, so if they're going to check the decibel levels, they're gonna be, uh, at the lower level, it's not gonna be as loud, because the sound's coming off the roof and going out through the, the neighborhood.
I think you were to speculate that, though.
That's exactly how it's worked.
That's the problem.
I saw it on the stand, sorry, you said, Claramas?
I'm sorry, no, the, the medical building.
That's all my, that's all my Claramas.
Five Franklin. It's a medical professional building.
You're hearing this on Weaver.
I hear it on Weaver and Bluefield. Oh, yeah, I mean, it was.
So it should be loud at, at that level down below, if it's really that loud? I don't know, I don't know, it's, it's tough, because it's traveling up, right? And, and the problem is, our ordinance is based upon ground level, right?
Yeah, well, the, the testing with the meter.
Do you have to test at his house?
Yeah.
No, I'm sure that's the way.
That's actually the way it's done.
I mean, I, I mean, that was, that's what brought me here tonight, I'm actually surprised, I really thought, I'm, I don't know what chains changed since early January.
That's probably a quarter mile away, no?
Well, it's gotta be longer than that, I think.
So how did you zero in on it's Five Franklin Avenue?
Oh, I, I, it was.
And not a hospital, let you say, or another.
Well, I eventually drove over, and then, I mean, it's, it, um, ninety-nine, I could be wrong, but I'm.
Super fresh.
I'm pretty sure it's, it's the, the, yeah, Five, Five Franklin, the medical building, not the hospital, the big building next to the hospital.
Professional.
Yeah, I'm, okay.
I believe they will.
I'm.
I'm not, I'm just sending email to their, to their maintenance.
Yes, definitely.
I'm, I'm actually shocked that no one else here from the town.
I'm sure nobody from Belleville has that.
That is, yeah, I mean, I don't.
Or even Claramas would say something about it.
I'm, I'm.
Hospital, if you're in a hospital.
We'll speak with Inspector DeAngelis.
Yeah, that's the police department's, uh, role, chief.
I'm gonna get together with him, and he's gonna show me.
He's gonna show me where?
I think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
The manager does have a direct contact in the hospital, I'm sure he'll at least communicate your findings tomorrow.
Yeah, well, again, it's, I don't think it's the hospital, it's the.
Well, they, they own the building.
Oh, they own the building.
Indirectly, they own, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public commenting?
Good evening, my name is Leanne Parrow from fifty-seven Fairway Ave. I decided to speak today because I have been blocked from Mayor Melham's official Facebook page since November third, twenty-twenty-three. At the height of the Board of Trustees campaign, I commented on his page about one of his candidates, he then blocked me from his page. I believe this action infringes on my First Amendment rights, I have a copy of what I wrote, if anyone is interested in seeing what caused me to be silenced on Mayor Melham's page. My comments were based on the performance of one of the candidates that he endorsed at the Q and A forum held at the VHS auditorium on November first, twenty-twenty-three. Video is available in the VPS Facebook page for anyone interested in watching that. What I wrote was my opinion and a discussion of the facts, it was not appropriate at all to be censored. Reaffirming voters, instead of blocking or silencing them for their opinions, is better and more useful for the town. I wonder if my comment had been about better Belleville's opponents, would he have blocked me for that? I doubt it. Recently, I inquired about the Fairway Park renovations on the Facebook group Belleville Parents. I asked when the renovations were supposed to start, because the park has seen better days. I got a few comments from residents, one of them being a screenshot of Mayor Melham's Facebook post from August twenty-twenty-two, stating that the park is about to get a complete upgrade because the town received a grant for it. Fast forward to almost two years later, the graffiti, broken swings, and damaged equipments are still there. Someone sent a screenshot of my post to the mayor, so he had to post it on his social media. DPW fixed the swing right away, however, Melham failed to address all the graffiti and other broken pieces in that playground. Unfortunately, that swing has been broken for quite some time now, over six months. Clearly, the park needed maintenance. A simple "thank you" for bringing this to his attention would have sufficed, but of course, he couldn't leave it at that. He decided to trash all non-official baked Belleville pages to the ground. Perhaps a post in an unofficial town page would have not been necessary if voters don't get silenced when they disclose opposing views or concerns on matters affecting the town. Mayor Melham says he is the most accessible mayor, I disagree, not if you block your constituents. Unfortunately, I am not the only Belleville resident he has blocked on social media, I am just one on an ever-growing list of people he has blocked for one reason or another. It's one thing to block people on your personal Facebook account, it's a whole other thing to block them from your official political account where you make townwide announcements. Not every single Belleville page posts what's going on. There are certain things that only the mayor posts, and because of this decision to block people, I and many others are missing out on information. And as a Belleville taxpayer, I find this unacceptable and highly deplorable. The mayor's actions are very unprofessional and undemocratic, and I hope he will act honorably and unblock those he has blocked from his page. I'm gonna finish this up with a quote from The Birth of a New Age by Dr. Martin Luther King. "We need leaders, not in love with money, but in love with justice, not in love with publicity, but in love with humanity. Leaders who can subject their particular egos to the pressing urgencies of the great cause of freedom. God give us leaders, a time like this demands great leaders, leaders whom the fog of life cannot chill, men whom the lust of office cannot buy, leaders who have honor, leaders who will not lie, leaders who will stand before a pagan god and damn his treacherous flattery." Thank you.
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Floyd Street, as I mentioned earlier, I'm glad to see that the online Oprah portal is once again working on the township website, it had been missing for a length of time, just the, the old-fashioned traditional forum was there, uh, but I'm glad to see that the, the technology is back in place. However, the reported concern thing has been missing since the beginning of the year, are you planning to bring back some version of reported concern? Cause I found it.
I think some, the contract expired for both, which is why the Oprah was down, now there's a new company in place, which is why you see it's backed up, I don't believe there's been a decision yet on the new reported concern yet.
All right, hopefully it will happen soon.
I, I use it all the time.
All right. Uh, wanted to ask, uh, do you have any tentative date for introducing the budget, the twenty-twenty-five budget, I see Mr. Di Maria's here, I'm sure he's looking for an opportunity to speak tonight.
Just look like quality.
Uh, if, if, is there, is there any, any tentative date for the introduction of the budget?
We'll, we'll need the due date by, uh, March, uh, March, rather, next month.
Our CFO is on the record that we will be introducing on time.
On the record.
Correct me if I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, am I wrong?
No.
Pick it up.
Thank you.
On the record.
If you haven't already heard, um, you know, I've, I've been away from board meetings due to circumstances beyond my control, uh, but, uh, last night, Dr. Tomko, um, spoke at length about the recent, uh, uh, action on part of the council to not allow the introduction of a, um, uh, ordinance for an ECIA loan, if you haven't seen it yet, I would encourage you to do so.
That would be the ordinance of the E Gaming Theater, uh, park and equipment.
Yeah, there's a number of things here, but, you know, if you, it's, it would be why, I'm sure you, it's already brought to your attention, but if it hasn't, on the off chance it hasn't, please, uh, take a look at it. I think it's, it would be worth your, your while to do so. Uh, let's see, uh, in regard, oh, the developers agreement. Um, last year, you started finding, if I remember correctly, the Cortlandt Street project, uh, $17,500 a month, because they had failed to complete the project on time. It's my understanding that the premier developer, Tiplinski Project, just south of us on Washington Avenue, was supposed to have finished its, uh, project by the end of last year, so I'd like to know if you care to, to tell, are you also now starting to find, um, that developer for failure to complete by the end of last year? I mean, I'm gonna be operating the developers agreement, I couldn't find it anywhere online. Uh, in regard to the, uh, comments that the gentleman made about Facebook banning, I just want everyone to know that the U.S. Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals very recently made a ruling about this. When a Facebook page, any social media platform is used by an elected official, it is illegal, it's a violation of First Amendment rights, for that elected official to ban anyone from accessing the site, the, the Facebook page. Uh, I was one of the first people you banned from your Facebook page, all going all the way back to before you became mayor, when you were running in the spring, but I, I'm still banned. Uh, so the only way I could get to it is by using other aliases, but if I know if I post, you'll ban, pan that too, so I can, I can look, but I can't touch, you know, so. It, it, it really is wrong, as she so eloquently said, for you to ban anybody, because you are technically in violation of law. The last thing I want to say here, and this is a follow-up to what Mr. Grant Antoni said, when you're, uh, considering appointing a resident to any board, that's an honor, that's a privilege. Do you make any effort to make sure that before you appoint that person, that there hasn't been any legal action taken by the town hall against that same person? I mean, it's really, it's, it's not appropriate, in my opinion, and that many others, that if you have, uh, uh, many people would love the opportunity. I know I relish the seven years that I was on the zoning board, but when you have someone that you're considering who may have had serious legal action taken by, by previous town hall administrations, do you think that person really should be given that honor, that privilege of serving on a board?
Knowing previous town hall administrations, uh, I wouldn't say that's a home run, that you would automatically disqualify them, because you were pursued by a prior administration.
Well, the, you know, there's extensive court records available online, if you do some searching. I'd be more than happy to talk to you guys in private about what, uh, I'm not gonna go into any details here for obvious reasons, but you should be aware of the fact that, you know, there's, there, there may be a history here that could preclude persons from serving on, on our boards.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Ma'am?
Good evening, Carmella Fleisch, 933 Main Street. Just out of curiosity, when the ordinances come up for introduction or passing, is there any particular way they come in? Do they come in, like, all at once, or is it just, you know, what you can get on the agenda? Do they eat each, each time?
It depends, um, so there's publishing issues, so if you had, if we had a meeting every single week, if we wouldn't be able to introduce an ordinance in the next week, seven days later, take action on second reading, because that's if you publish a newspaper in advance and for X amount of days, so that's why a lot of times you see us, for instance, the first readings today will probably not appear on the next council agenda, there's usually a skip meeting. And then we also made a promise that we weren't going to introduce, uh, I'm sorry, we weren't gonna do ordinances for second reading during the daytime meetings, and there were more time at nighttime, but we did that, so make sure that, you know, people here, we have more people here.
That, yeah, so you just answered it, that was my second part of that question, because it wasn't, I wasn't sure, because I saw a lot of things for introductions today.
Yeah, they say, they could have been, uh, last meeting, which was the daytime meeting, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna sort that. It was our, we've only done two daytime meetings, so we're still-
Right, no, no.
Let's go figure it out.
I mean, so, so far, you know, it's interesting for the daytime meetings, I do like to see all of the heads of the departments here. It's a lot easier, you know, face-to-face, I mean, we're a small town, you know, it's-
Plus, we do our presentations that day, it's easier for vendors to come in during the day than it is in the evening. Tomorrow night, I'll be presenting in Upper Berkeley County an hour away. I'd much rather do it during the day than at nighttime.
Yeah, of course, no, but at least, you know, there was the one lady who had the, the water bill, the $200 water bill, and, you know, the head department was right here, I'm sure they, you know, took action on it, things like that.
Great example of why we did it, uh, because then she actually not only spoke to the director, but then walked downstairs, there are offers, something you can't do tonight.
Right, yeah, no, I, like I said, so far, I'm applauding the, you know, the daytime, you know, nighttime split. You know, I just wish, like every time, I just wish more people could attend either the daytime or the evening meeting. Uh, and just an update, yes, I'm going to be emailing Meredith again, because-
I think she may have you blocked.
I got news for you, I got ways around that one. Uh, but no, I do appreciate the town coming out, because I understand that was not your responsibility, and I appreciate, and I thank the DPW director at last meeting, because again, it was disgraceful. I mean, the post office, what is with the post office with those bids? I just-
Get mail, so.
You know, I mean, do we have, like, individual, like, invisible people living on Main Street, getting mail there? I mean, I'm gonna be, probably sometime this week, I'm probably gonna be going over to the post office I have myself, and just saying, "Look, can you clean up your trash?" But thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Do we have anybody on the phone for public comment? Anybody on the phone for public comment? Nope, all entertaining, motion to close public hearing. So move.
Second.
Motion made and second to close public commenting, clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiana?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Malham?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is resolutions, consent agenda.
I just need, oh, fold. Anything else, huh?
Can't even move. No, no, you have to move. Yes.
No, no, I abstain, uh, I abstain from anything you can object to.
Well, it's making out, which might clear. Okay, I need a motion to, uh, let's, we have, uh, O pulled off, so let me get a motion to move the consent agenda with the exception of O.
Motion.
Second. Motion made and second for the consent agenda, clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiana?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes. Need a motion to introduce, a motion to move, uh, ordinance, resolution O.
Motion.